Hi, everybody. It's been a few months since I've seen you all here. Yes, this USDA grant is something that Mayor Greer had brought to my attention last year, and what it is, as he has said, is for public safety. And I know I approached you here a couple of months ago, or about three or four months ago, about the purchase of police cars. And what this USDA grant is, it's the matching grant. And so, it's a, they'll pay 55 percent, we pay 45 percent for a brand-new police car. So, and it's up to, I believe, $50,000 is the amount that we can buy a vehicle for. So...
It could be more than one, too. Right. It could be more than one.
It can be more than one, but the total amount of whatever we purchase can be $50,000. So, just like I said, they match up to 55 percent of that. So, I think that it's a great opportunity to be able to get some free funding through the government. And part of that, as Mayor Greer has said, part of that is we have to bring it into a public meeting and at least let you know that that's our desires to apply for that grant. It doesn't necessarily say that you guys have to say, yes, we'll go ahead and match that, and that's something I'll talk to you about later on. But it's just part of the grant process that we have to bring it into a public meeting.
May I jump in there for just a second?
Certainly.
It's also annually, I've been working on it with Mike, it's also an annual thing. I know the town of Silver Lake, they do it every year. It's part of how they buy their vehicles. So, after we get in there the first time, I would like for it to happen year after year.
Once you're good, you still have to reapply, right?
You still have to reapply, yes.
And I will give Tish a lot of credit. It's a pretty thorough application. And quite honestly, I'd seen this last year, and it was a little cumbersome for me, a little overwhelming for me, and I didn't really understand it. I didn't really know how to explain to Tish all these numbers I needed. So, fortunately, the lady that, so with the three of us working together, it's a great opportunity for us to possibly seek out a grant where it would possibly pay, help me out, somebody with numbers, 55 percent of 50,000 if that was the amount that we were going to go for. So, well worth our time and investment, and I believe Tish said it would only take her a handful of hours to complete, and she's really deep into it, and I'm still in the process of trying to get, help me, what's the word?
The quotes for the cars. That's the only thing we're waiting on for now.
Quotes for the vehicles, too. So, I have to get three different quotes from them that are extremely similar to one another. So, it's something I'll most likely bring back to the board next month to make sure that you folks are okay with me, or the police department, I should say, proceeding with this grant process. It's kind of an unusual grant. Usually, you just write a grant, you go with it, and if you win, you win. But this one, like I said, they want you, it's just part of the process, it's a governmental grant, and they want us to bring it into a public meeting.
Kind of strange that it's coming from the U.S. Department of Agriculture.
Yeah.
I feel the same way.
Yeah.
Doesn't make much sense.
Yeah, the USDA, there's a lot of rural development. So, all of Miami County is technically rural, even in Peru. So, they do a lot of helping with any rural issue, whether it be public safety or housing purposes and stuff like that. So, that's kind of why it falls underneath their umbrella.
Twenty-seven thousand five hundred is worth going for.
Thank you. That's the number I was looking for. Yeah, that's, when you're buying a car, it's a good chunk of change you've got to put into one car.
I don't think so.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
So, in the true public hearing form, if there's any questions from the public? Counsel has any other questions for Mike or Tish or I in that time?
Well, if there's no questions or comments on the USDA grant, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and call the Pro-Come Council for June 4th, 2018, to order. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance by Sheriff Lee and the invocation by, actually, Tom is our standard stand-in. Would you like, would you mind? Thank you.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Father in heaven, we come to you this evening and ask that you be with us. Help us to use wisdom as we proceed with our meeting. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Tom. Next, we have roll call.
Holland.
Here.
Guston.
Here.
Torrance.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Ally.
Here.
Langwell.
Here.
Krauskopf.
Yes.
All right. Next, we have the reading and correcting of the Journal.
Move we suspend the rules and dispense with the reading and correcting of the Journal.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Krauskopf and seconded by Councilman Ally to dismiss the rules and dismiss of the reading and correcting of the Journal. Roll call.
Holland.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Torrance.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ally.
Yes.
Langwell.
Yes.
Krauskopf.
Yes.
So, we have communications. There was a misstep on my part with the landscape proposal with Peru. We needed actual ordinance asking for an additional appropriation to help pay for that landscape proposal for Main Street. So, we'll bring that up next time as an actual ordinance and begin that process next time. I think you guys might have gotten some information about the streetscapes, but we actually need to have ordinance asking for some funds for that, too.
Yeah, I'm going to be here next month. I'll be gone. They did this 40 years ago, and they... Yes, we did. Your dad was part of it. He was. My only, I'm going to say something about that.
Sure.
Even though we're not going to be working with it this evening, Bob Weaver and Carl Krauskopf and a couple others were involved in a thing called Operation Facelift. We had planners put in downtown, and the biggest hassle with that is maintenance.
Right.
And I didn't see anything in here about maintenance, and it might be something you might have them address.
Gotcha.
Before they approach us with this again, because I don't want to invest that kind of money unless it's going to be maintained.
Yeah. And Kurt, next time, I think we're just going to bring it up, I think they're planning on presenting the information, doing the questioning on the second reading, so I think you'll be able to be there for that.
Yeah, I will. I just, I see here you're going to have to move all the water lines that were used during circus days, and that's concerning, too, because they're hidden quite well now in those boxes, in the things that are there. So, I'll be prepared to discuss it in August.
Okay. All right. Next, Chief Meeks, you have something to share?
It's been about two and a half years now that I've been the chief of police, and it's been an honor to serve in that capacity with the city of Peru. And as we all know, prior to this, the change that we'd made within the police department, there was some issues, maybe is the best word that I can say. And I think at some given points, and prior to that, we had some questions by the community as far as the integrity of the police department. And so, there was a lot of concern about that when I was blessed to become the chief of police. And in doing so, one of the things I know that I discussed with Mayor Greer prior to him appointing me was that I wanted to gain back the trust of the citizens of Peru and of Miami County. And in doing so, you know, I wanted to try to reach out through social media and just try to reach out through public events as best as we could to gain back the trust of our community, of our city council, and of everybody involved in Peru, Indiana. And so, today, I want to bring light or bring attention to one of our officers, Officer Lee Mitchell. Lee Mitchell has done so many great things for our police department in those exact areas that we have, and Lee and his wife, Sarah, are right back here. But if I could, I wrote out a letter of commendation, I also have a plaque to present to him, but I'd like to go and read this letter aloud, if I may. Officer Lee Mitchell, I want to recognize and commend you for your outstanding efforts in making a positive impact between the citizens of Peru, Indiana, and the Pro-Police Department. You have excelled in numerous areas to bring positive light to our department. In social media, in today's world, we have seen a gravitation to social media. Millions of people use social media each and every day. You've done a remarkable job of taking control of the social media of the Pro-Police Department. On Facebook alone, we have over 12,500 followers, and I'd like to say we maybe had 3,000 when he first took over that account, so he's done an amazing job with that. We've been able to use Facebook and other social media outlets as a way to show the positive things our officers are doing in our community. He also developed an autism and Alzheimer's database. And what that is, and I'm going to talk about it a little bit in here, but what Lee had found from another department was that, and what we ran into in our own calls, you might run into a young man or a young child maybe has autism, so when you go to that house, and maybe that young one has dialed 911, and maybe their parent is asleep, well, now when we go to that home, we realize that someone in that house may have autism. What he actually did was, we started this database, so our officers know when we go to that house that we may run into a young one that has autism. He also developed these decals that we can stick on the front door, the parents can stick on the front door, so when we walk up, it sticks out to our officers or our firefighters or EMS and folks like that. So, and the same thing with the Alzheimer's folks as well. You know, we know that sometimes they can wander away from home, so if we have a database and they don't know where they live, because they're going to tell us where they lived when they were a child. But now, we have a database, and we also have pictures attached to those, too, so now we can identify them and be able to get them back to their homes safely. But reading on then with this letter, you spearheaded this idea to start a database based on calls officers have received. During some calls, we may encounter someone who has autism or Alzheimer's. These calls, as all calls, need to be handled in the proper manner to help provide needed services. However, by starting this program, it provides officers the foresight that they may need to speak with someone with autism or Alzheimer's. This gives an officer information to help him or her make better decisions and get better public assistance. The Bears and Blankets Program. Each year, our Fraternal Order of Police Lodge participates in a Christmas for Kids program to help those who may be less fortunate provide Christmas gifts and food. This past year, you stepped up the efforts by offering the Pro-Police Department as a place to citizens could donate bears and blankets to kids for Christmas. We saw such a tremendous outpouring of support that we were able to provide blankets for all kids and their families. We even had more left over to be able to stock up our police cars with blankets in the event we go to a home and see a child who may need a blanket to keep them warm through the winter. Fundraising efforts for officers in need. This past year, we saw one of our own officers have medical issues that caused him to miss time from work. This medical issue also caused this officer to have to go through numerous medical tasks traveling to and from these appointments and causing his family possible financial concerns. You took the lead to have fundraising efforts in the form of selling T-shirts, wristbands, and car decals. You also raised money by setting up a table at a local business and had a fundraising dinner. We all know law enforcement is a family. You exemplified that by showing selfless efforts to ensure our fellow brother was given financial peace of mind through a very trying time in his life. I've also witnessed you give your time and efforts to raise funds and give support to families of fallen officers, Carl Kuntz of the Howard County Sheriff's Department and Lieutenant Aaron Allen of the Southport Police Department. You've also tended the funerals of these officers, as well as a fallen, I'm sorry, as well as a funeral for fallen officer Jake Pickett of the Boone County Sheriff's Department. Through these fundraising efforts in support of our fellow officers, you have represented our department in times when the families of these officers were in the deepest need of compassion and caring. And then, most recently, the Honor Guard. After having seen other police departments in Indiana with an Honor Guard, you took the lead to implement the first-ever Honor Guard for the Pro-Police Department. The goal was to have this program to represent our department by presenting the American flag of our great nation. This Honor Guard team will be used in events throughout the community and possibly the state of Indiana, as requested. This is a tremendous way to not only represent the Pro-Police Department in a positive way, but it also is a great way to provide a service to our citizens. In the beginning stages of getting this program started, you sought out fundraising efforts to help fund, I'm sorry, to help fund the program. Businesses were solicited, and you also had a jailbreak effort that you put in on in April where several citizens were quote-unquote arrested and had to come up with bond money to get out of jail. This fundraising effort brought in over $12,000 to the program to help pay for the initial cost of uniforms for the team and the first year of training. On behalf of the Pro-Police Department and the citizens of Peru, I want to commend you for the time, commitment, and tireless effort you have put into the Pro-Police Department to make it the best it can be. These programs will have a lasting impact on our department and the community for years and possibly decades to come. So, Lee, if you could step on up here, please, and he's probably going to, his wife is probably in trouble because he had no idea why he was here today. So, she did a great job of making sure he was here to be presented with this. But this plaque here says, Officer Lee Mitchell, the Pro-Police Department, in recognition of your outstanding efforts in making a positive impact between the citizens of Peru, Indiana, and the Pro-Police Department, we commend you for your commitment to the betterment of our community. I want to thank you.
(Applause) Meeks. Can I take your guys' [inaudible]?
(Laughter).
Get pizza later.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Officer Mitchell.
Thank you. Okay. We'll move on to unfinished business. First item under unfinished business is Ordinance 15, 2018.
Ordinance 15, 2018, and ordinance for additional appropriations.
Move we adopt ordinance 15, 2018.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Krauskopf and seconded by Councilman Guston to adopt ordinance 15, 2018.
Okay, we're using 53,000 for, what again?
This is for the 911 agreement.
Yeah. This is our agreement with the county for central dispatch. The number we are going on was an estimate, and it was significantly higher than the estimate we were given, so we...
It usually always is, it seems like.
Yeah. So, we have need for an additional appropriation for that agreement.
The county's picking up a big portion.
What's that portion?
A lot more than this.
Do you know the number?
It's over 100 grand.
There was a, we split the ongoing operational costs, and so, this represents, so the total number that we were given, which is, I can't recall off the top of my head.
120.
Okay. So, the 120...
It's going to be 120, and it ended up coming in at 170, something.
Gotcha. Yeah. So, the initial estimate of 120 represented our half, and they split that half and half. So, the 173 and some change there is still half and half. And then, also, like Tom is talking about, too, there was a lot of initial setup costs that, I think, equated to at least 100,000, but they...
On top of that, 500,000.
Right.
Because of AT&amp;T.
Yeah.
Any questions? Okay. We're welcome.
Holland.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Torrance.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ally.
Yes.
Langwell.
Yes.
Krauskopf.
No.
The motion passes. Next, we have Ordinance 16, 2018.
Ordinance 16, 2018, and ordinance for additional appropriations.
Move we adopt ordinance 16, 2018.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Krauskopf and seconded by Councilwoman Torrance to adopt ordinance 16, 2018. This...
This is battery packs.
Yeah. So, our sirens, the emergency management, is that...
Tornado sirens.
Okay. Tornado sirens, yeah.
City tornado.
So, we split that cost with the county. Is that correct, Dave?
I'm not sure.
I believe that's a split with the county and the city.
I don't know. I don't usually work in that part of the city.
Yeah. So, this is for new battery packs for the tornado sirens. So, we were contacted just recently that we needed to replace them. Wasn't something we were aware of, so...
Any questions?
Nope.
We're welcome.
Holland.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Torrance.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ally.
Yes.
Langwell.
Yes.
Krauskopf.
Yes.
And it'll come back next month. Mr. Meeks, chief here?
Yeah.
Was it 12,854?
I have a question. I'm not sure. Just for Dave's sake.
After a lot of research done by our firearms instructor, Rod Richard, we opted to go and switch firearms that we currently carry. We were carrying Glock 40 caliber handguns. We now carry Glock 9 millimeter handguns. But he had done a lot of research on that, and tip what we've always done in the past in my 24 years here, we've always, if we go to trade in our guns, we find out the trade-in value through the company that we go through, which is Kiesler's out of Jeffersonville, Indiana. And then, those guns are offered to our officers for that exact price that they choose to purchase their gun that they've carried through their time with the police department. This 12,800 is the amount of money that was brought in from the sale of those firearms, so it's a money in, I guess if you can say it, it's a money in, money out thing. So, I don't know if that, does it still need multiple...
Yeah, we're still spending it, so we'll...
Okay. But it is money that came from officers into the general fund, so we're just asking for that money to be appropriated back out of general into the criminal investigation.
Should we meet up next month?
Very good. Okay. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Ordinance 17, 2018.
Ordinance 17, 2018, and ordinance to amend setback requirements for new construction on demolition lots.
Move we consider ordinance 17, 2018.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Krauskopf and seconded by Councilwoman Lee to consider ordinance 17, 2018. Roll call.
Holland.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Torrance.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ally.
Yes.
Langwell.
Yes.
Krauskopf.
Yes.
So, we have communications. There was a misstep on my part with the landscape proposal with Peru. We needed an actual ordinance asking for an additional appropriation to help pay for that landscape proposal for Main Street. So, we'll bring that up next time as an actual ordinance and begin that process next time. I think you guys might have gotten some information about the streetscapes, but we actually need to have ordinance asking for some funds for that, too.
Yeah, I'm going to be here next month. I'll be gone. They did this 40 years ago, and they... Yes, we did. Your dad was part of it. He was. My only, I'm going to say something about that.
Sure.
Even though we're not going to be working with it this evening, Bob Weaver and Carl Krauskopf and a couple others were involved in a thing called Operation Facelift. We had planners put in downtown, and the biggest hassle with that is maintenance.
Right.
And I didn't see anything in here about maintenance, and it might be something you might have them address before they approach us with this again, because I don't want to invest that kind of money unless it's going to be maintained.
Yeah. And Kurt, next time, I think we're just going to bring it up, I think they're planning on presenting the information, doing the questioning on the second reading, so I think you'll be able to be there for that.
Yeah, I will. I just, I see here you're going to have to move all the water lines that were used during circus days, and that's concerning, too, because they're hidden quite well now in those boxes, in the things that are there, so I'll be prepared to discuss it in August.
Okay. All right. Next, Chief Meeks, you have something to share?
It's been about two and a half years now that I've been the chief of police, and it's been an honor to serve in that capacity with the city of Peru. And as we all know, prior to this, the change that we'd made within the police department, there was some issues, maybe is the best word that I can say. And I think at some given points, and prior to that, we had some questions by the community as far as the integrity of the police department. And so, there was a lot of concern about that when I was blessed to become the chief of police. And in doing so, one of the things I know that I discussed with Mayor Greer prior to him appointing me was that I wanted to gain back the trust of the citizens of Peru and of Miami County. And in doing so, you know, I wanted to try to reach out through social media and just try to reach out through public events as best as we could to gain back the trust of our community, of our city council, and of everybody involved in Peru, Indiana. And so, today, I want to bring light or bring attention to one of our officers, Officer Lee Mitchell. Lee Mitchell has done so many great things for our police department in those exact areas that we have, and Lee and his wife, Sarah, are right back here. But if I could, I wrote out a letter of commendation, I also have a plaque to present to him, but I'd like to go and read this letter aloud, if I may. Officer Lee Mitchell, I want to recognize and commend you for your outstanding efforts in making a positive impact between the citizens of Peru, Indiana, and the Pro-Police Department. You have excelled in numerous areas to bring positive light to our department. In social media, in today's world, we have seen a gravitation to social media. Millions of people use social media each and every day. You've done a remarkable job of taking control of the social media of the Pro-Police Department. On Facebook alone, we have over 12,500 followers, and I'd like to say we maybe had 3,000 when he first took over that account, so he's done an amazing job with that. We've been able to use Facebook and other social media outlets as a way to show the positive things our officers are doing in our community. He also developed an autism and Alzheimer's database. And what that is, and I'm going to talk about it a little bit in here, but what Lee had found from another department was that, and what we ran into in our own calls, you might run into a young man or a young child maybe has autism, so when you go to that house, and maybe that young one has dialed 911, and maybe their parent is asleep, well, now when we go to that home, we realize that someone in that house may have autism. What he actually did was, we started this database, so our officers know when we go to that house that we may run into a young one that has autism. He also developed these decals that we can stick on the front door, the parents can stick on the front door, so when we walk up, it sticks out to our officers or our firefighters or EMS and folks like that. So, and the same thing with the Alzheimer's folks as well. You know, we know that sometimes they can wander away from home, so if we have a database and they don't know where they live, because they're going to tell us where they lived when they were a child. But now, we have a database, and we also have pictures attached to those, too, so now we can identify them and be able to get them back to their homes safely. But reading on then with this letter, you spearheaded this idea to start a database based on calls officers have received. During some calls, we may encounter someone who has autism or Alzheimer's. These calls, as all calls, need to be handled in the proper manner to help provide needed services. However, by starting this program, it provides officers the foresight that they may need to speak with someone with autism or Alzheimer's. This gives an officer information to help him or her make better decisions and get better public assistance. The Bears and Blankets Program. Each year, our Fraternal Order of Police Lodge participates in a Christmas for Kids program to help those who may be less fortunate provide Christmas gifts and food. This past year, you stepped up the efforts by offering the Pro-Police Department as a place to citizens could donate bears and blankets to kids for Christmas. We saw such a tremendous outpouring of support that we were able to provide blankets for all kids and their families. We even had more left over to be able to stock up our police cars with blankets in the event we go to a home and see a child who may need a blanket to keep them warm through the winter. Fundraising efforts for officers in need. This past year, we saw one of our own officers have medical issues that caused him to miss time from work. This medical issue also caused this officer to have to go through numerous medical tasks traveling to and from these appointments and causing his family possible financial concerns. You took the lead to have fundraising efforts in the form of selling T-shirts, wristbands,[1378.36]
I don't know if that, does it still need multiple-
Yeah, we're still spending it, so we'll-
Okay. But it is money that came from officers into the general fund, so we're just asking for that money to be appropriated back out of general into-
Should we meet up next month?
Very good. Okay. Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Next, we have Ordinance 17-2018.
Ordinance 17-2018, and ordinance to amend setback requirements for new construction on demolition lots.
Move we consider ordinance 17-2018.
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Kroskopf and seconded by Councilman Lee to consider ordinance 17-2018. Welcome.
Holland.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Torrance.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ally.
Yes.
Langwell.
Yes.
Kroskopf.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have Resolution 8-2018.
Resolution 8-2018, a resolution establishing rate tracking factor for the municipal electric utility of the city of Peru, Indiana.
Move we consider Resolution 8-2018.
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Kroskopf and seconded by Councilman Torrance to consider ordinance, I'm sorry, Resolution 8-2018.
Hey, Kurt. Hang on, let's-
Decrease.
Yeah. Welcome.
Holland.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Torrance.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ally.
Yes.
Langwell.
Yes.
Kroskopf.
Yes. Move we adopt Resolution 8-2018.
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Kroskopf and seconded by Councilman Guston to adopt ordinance, I'm sorry, Resolution 8-2018.
This is our normal quarterly rate adjustment, and Tom, as you pointed, that's going down. Point 000199. Kind of like gas prices, they go down little tiny bits. They get up and down, they go down in tiny bits. As I can't be complaining, we're down a little bit, but it is what it is. Any questions?
Nope.
Decrease.
Welcome.
Holland.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Torrance.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ally.
Yes.
Langwell.
Yes.
Kroskopf.
Yes. Move we adopt Resolution 9-2018.
This one's a mouthful.
Resolution 10-2018, a resolution of the common council of the city of Peru adopting the city approved government access channel use policy, which establishes the requirements, criteria, scheduling, and technical format for programming broadcast by the city over the local cable system.
Obviously Glenn Russell wrote that. Move we consider Resolution 10-2018.
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Kroskopf and seconded by Councilman Guston to consider Resolution 10-2018. Welcome.
Holland.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Torrance.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ally.
Yes.
Langwell.
Yes.
Kroskopf.
Yep. Move we adopt Resolution 10-2018.
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Kroskopf and seconded by Councilman Guston to adopt Resolution 10-2018.
Well, it must be Jim's reason for being here. Oh, Brooke. All right, it's Brooke's phone.
Good evening. We are here tonight again for Snavely's request for abatement. They are doing a personal property investment of $4,852,657, and a real property investment of $250,000. This should result in 20 new jobs and securing the 170 employees they currently have. We had met with the incentive committee, with Phyllis and Cheryl together, and then I reviewed with Blaine, and they are positively recommending a five-year abatement at 70% each year for five years. Can I have Jason here from Snavely, if you have any questions for him?
Hi.
Good evening. Kind of be equipped by where we buy them.
CNC equipment primarily. It's to expand our current work and to add new work.
Okay. I mean, machines is two, it's four and a half million dollars, 4.8 million.
Less than you would think.
Sure.
I think it's about 12 pieces of equipment.
Oh, that's good. Okay. Okay. And 250 real property, you know?
New docks primarily.
Okay. If you got to build the stuff, you got to get it out the door, right?
That's correct.
Doesn't do any good, they don't get it out the door, so, okay. Anybody have any questions for Jason?
They've done nothing but grow since they've been out there. And I think, thinking back, you know, we have kind of concerns in that, but I think they've been well taken care of through the years, and they've lived up to everything.
Yeah, absolutely. Did I, it seems that the wages are going up too. Like, since when I started on the incentive committee, it seems like the average wages have gone up considerably.
It has been the past couple of years, and we hope to continue that trend.
Yeah, love to see it. Thank you.
Any questions, anybody? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's have a real call.
Holland.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Torrance.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ally.
Yes.
Langwell.
Yes.
Kroskopf.
Yes. And the motion passes.
Next, we have Resolution Number 9-2018.
Resolution Number 9-2018, a resolution of the common council of the city of Peru approving the request of Snavely Machine and Manufacturing for tax abatement.
Move we consider Resolution 9-2018.
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Kroskopf and seconded by Councilman Guston to adopt Resolution 9-2018.
Well, it must be Jim's reason for being here. Oh, Brooke. All right, it's Brooke's phone.
Good evening. We are here tonight again for Snavely's request for abatement. They are doing a personal property investment of $4,852,657, and a real property investment of $250,000. This should result in 20 new jobs and securing the 170 employees they currently have. We had met with the incentive committee, with Phyllis and Cheryl together, and then I reviewed with Blaine, and they are positively recommending a five-year abatement at 70% each year for five years. Can I have Jason here from Snavely, if you have any questions for him?
Hi.
Good evening. Kind of be equipped by where we buy them.
CNC equipment primarily.
Okay.
It's to expand our current work and to add new work.
Okay. I mean, machines is two, it's four and a half million dollars, 4.8 million.
Less than you would think.
Sure.
I think it's about 12 pieces of equipment.
Oh, that's good. Okay. Okay. And 250 real property, you know?
New docks primarily.
Okay. If you got to build the stuff, you got to get it out the door, right?
That's correct.
Doesn't do any good, they don't get it out the door, so, okay. Anybody have any questions for Jason?
They've done nothing but grow since they've been out there. And I think, thinking back, you know, we have kind of concerns in that, but I think they've been well taken care of through the years, and they've lived up to everything.
Yeah, absolutely. Did I, it seems that the wages are going up too. Like, since when I started on the incentive committee, it seems like the average wages have gone up considerably.
It has been the past couple of years, and we hope to continue that trend.
Yeah, love to see it. Thank you.
Any questions, anybody? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's have a real call.
Holland.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Torrance.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ally.
Yes.
Langwell.
Yes.
Kroskopf.
Yes. And the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Resolution 10-2018.
This one's a mouthful. Resolution 10-2018, a resolution of the common council of the city of Peru adopting the city approved government access channel use policy, which establishes the requirements, criteria, scheduling, and technical format for programming broadcast by the city over the local cable system.
Obviously Glenn Russell wrote that. Move we consider Resolution 10-2018.
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Kroskopf and seconded by Councilman Guston to consider Resolution 10-2018. Welcome.
Holland.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Torrance.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ally.
Yes.
Langwell.
Yes.
Kroskopf.
Yes. Move we adopt Resolution 10-2018.
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Kroskopf and seconded by Councilman Guston to adopt Resolution 10-2018.
Well, I think we're bringing it up into the modern era, since the original cable franchise agreement was many, 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 many cable companies ago, and Dave, you got any input on this?
Basically, what it comes down to is, I'm coming.
Okay.
I'm moving slowly. Basically, what it comes down to is, we're putting on paper what we've been doing in practice, and we're giving ourselves a little more ability to do stuff. Up to this point, I'm generally the person who puts the bulletin board for the city channel up, and it's been pretty much what people send to me, following a large part of that guideline, but what we're going to be able to do now is, somebody here at City Hall's also going to be able to put messages up, which means, for instance, in there, we talk about the garage sale permits. You buy a garage sale permit, they'll put a page up about your garage sale on the city channel. So, we're taking it a little farther, but we're kind of putting on paper what our practice has been, is basically what it comes down to. So, and most of it's there for protection of the city so that some nut job can't come in and say, hey, I want to play this, and we go up to-
It's called kook.
It's the technical term.
Kook.
Yeah. It protects the city for the most part, gives us a written guideline to go by, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
You're welcome.
Any questions?
Glenn Russell is the chairman of the Cable Committee, and I think he has done a tremendous job putting together all this information. We did have a question about the funds that come in. Kurt, you remember, he was checking on that.
Well, it was more than what- Yeah, it was more than originally thought, yeah. Yep. Yep. Because it assuaged my fears of running out of money, and it was going to run out, and yeah, took care of that, so, yep. Just some guidelines so that our legal department has some legs to stand on if somebody comes in and wants to do something, let's put something on there.
Yes, exactly what that does, if someone wants to come put inappropriate material on the TV, there's been no guidelines to tell them no, so now there is.
Yeah, there is. So, if we're here and get this passed, that person out there in the lobby won't be able to put that on there. Just kidding. Questions? Comments? Welcome.
Holland.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Torrance.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ally.
Yes.
Langwell.
Yes.
Kroskopf.
Yes.
Motion passes. I believe that is all we have on our agenda.
That's it. All that work you did, here's what we're adding. What happened?
Oh, you're going to take a lot more out, though.
Yeah.
You're going to take more than you get out, than you get to put in. Just figuring out which ones to replace.
Anything further? Anything further from the audience? Yes, Mr. Tid.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And just a couple of things, real quick, a couple of comments. First of all, again, going back to Snavely's, I'd like to congratulate Joe Kenny and Jason and the whole entire staff out there, because, like Phyllis pointed out, they have continued to grow. And coming up here, not this month, but next month, for the folks that were able to tour Heraus, where we set that up on a Wednesday, we're actually, on July the 11th, going to be touring Snavely Chine. So, we will send out a reminder invitation, so if you'd like to come down and see what goes on at Snavely and some of the things that they have planned, that's scheduled for July the 11th. The other thing we were talking about, demolition, just going back to the black elimination program, Brooke has been working her tail off closing on several properties here lately. We are up to how many closings now?
16.
16. So, of the first group that we partnered with the city, the Redevelopment Commission partnered with the city, and we have taken heed, we're now transferring 16 of those back into private ownership. Those were through mainly to adjoining property owners that had an interest in acquiring the lots. We've got about five or six that we don't have purchase agreements on, we're just going to be doing closed bid type of sale, which could be advertised in the paper-
It wasn't ready.
-during the month of June. Bid opening will be in July. Again, all the proceeds from this first round of sales will be through sending to rediscover downtown, because that was the designated use of these funds that we generate from this white elimination was to put into revitalizing downtown and doing some improvements in downtown. So, just wanted to-
Good job, Brooke. Thank you.
Awesome. Good, thank you. Anything further? I move adjourn. Second. All in paper.
Aye.
All right. All right. We're out.